Good evening. Talking this evening about the results of the cost of service study that I performed on behalf of RMLD using fiscal 2015 data as a basis. I'm then going to talk about the recommendations that I'm making with respect to rate design, and then discuss what the next steps are and open to discussion. We began the process actually by conducting, performing a historic test year cost of service study, which I believe I've spoken to you about before, where we took actual data from fiscal 13, expenses and revenues, and allocated them across the various customer classes to determine how the existing rates were performing. And to verify that the model was working, that the model is correcting, calculating revenues correctly, and to then give you a snapshot of how the rates, how the present rates look. We updated that model with fiscal 15 data provided by RMLD in terms of expenses, and we then calculated what the revenues should be under the present, using the present rates, and made sure that those revenues were consistent with the revenues that RMLD is projecting, and then determined what was required in order to meet the revenue requirements of the system, to cover expenses and to provide sufficient net income to make, to meet all the other obligations of the system. The bottom line is that we determined that an overall increase of about 1.3% was all that was necessary to meet the budgeted expenses for the year based on the projected level of sales that we're looking at.
Excuse me for just a minute.
Yes.
Is there a way to turn on just part of the lights as opposed to having all the lights off? Yeah, that works for me. Does it work for anybody else? Hate conducting meetings in the dark.
So the modeling indicated that the existing rates of return by customer class are at the limit of what we consider to be the standard municipal utility practice. They're not, they're not outside the range, but they're kind of at the, at the outer edge of the range of rates of return that we usually see. That is that residential rates of return are fairly low and commercial industrial are fairly high. However, I do note that the existing rates are extremely competitive with other municipal utility and private utilities across all customer classes, and that it is, in fact, I note that one of your main objectives is to attract and retain commercial load, which helps to support competitive rates for everybody and to keep rates stable. Get this eventually. So the, we looked at two cases, one that we already, that I already talked about, which is a 1.3% across-the-board increase. This is the easiest, certainly the easiest approach to take. All you really need to do is add approximately 1.3% to the distribution rates that you're charging to the customers, and that produces enough revenue to meet expenses. And every customer class gets, has the same impact. All the customers see essentially the same level of increase. We also looked at a second case, which is just to slightly smooth out the rates of return, to, within the same general constraint of an overall 1.3%, to move the individual class rate of return within the standard range that we see in, among municipal utilities. To do that would require changing the rates differently. So it would require a 5% increase in residential rates, a 1.3% increase in industrial rates, and a 3% decrease in the commercial and the school rates. This would actually have a fairly significant impact on the difference between the lowest rate of return and the highest rate of return that we see. But it does require each group of customers to see a slightly different impact, so that's... One of the other charges that we went into this with was to look at creating a third commercial class, a small commercial class. Typically, private utilities and larger municipal utilities have three commercial classes or general service classes, a small customer class, which deals with small businesses, anybody using fewer than 10,000 kilowatt-hours a month, which are the majority of your, of your commercial customers. And then there's a medium-sized commercial class that has a demand charge and an energy charge. Usually, the small commercial class is a kilowatt-hour-only and energy-only class. And this has historically been the case because the, because the cost of demand metering small customers was relatively high, and it wasn't worthwhile to provide the extra accuracy in billing customers a demand charge. What we found in looking into this is that it would probably not be a good idea. You are already demand metering all of those small customers, and if you were to take approximately 2,000 small commercial customers off of a demand rate and put them onto an energy-only rate, a significant number of them would see a 20% increase. And I was, this kind of surprised me, because normally I, you think about small commercial customers as being fairly uniform, but some of your small commercial customers, particularly the, towards the higher end of the usage, have very good load factor. That is that for every kilowatt of demand that they put on the system, they're using quite a few kilowatt-hours. And those customers are doing quite well under the current rate, and if you put them onto an energy-only rate, they would be hurt, and they would pay quite a bit more. And that would also not be an accurate way of billing them, because they're not imposing a lot of demand on your, on your system, and your, the present rate structure rewards them for that. And similarly, there would be decreases for the, for your low-load factor customers, what are typically considered to be bad customers, customers who are, who have very high demand relative to the number of kilowatt-hours that they're using. Those customers would get sizable decreases. So it really would not be consistent with the goal of sending accurate price signals to the customers. So at the end of the day, we're not recommending that you go down that road. Another charge that we had was to, was to look into a residential low-income rate. All of the private utilities have a low-income rate, and many municipals have adopted them voluntarily as well. I think that there's a state mandate that calls for, for the private utilities to have a low-income rate. And this is a rate that applies to customers who are receiving any sort of means-tested assistance from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so you don't have to qualify customers to do this, to put them on the rate. And there are basically two approaches that are taken, that are widely used. A lot of, a lot of municipal light departments have chosen to simply eliminate the customer charge for customers who qualify for a low-income rate. One advantage of this is that it provides the same benefit to all the customers, and is particularly beneficial on a percentage basis to small customers. And so it provides a fixed benefit in dollars, but a different benefit in percent depending on the usage. So for a customer using 250 kilowatt-hours, that would be a 9% reduction. For a more typical 500-kilowatt-hour customer, that would be about a 5% reduction. The other option, this is the one that's used by the, by the private utilities, is simply a flat percentage discount on the entire bill exclusive of purchased power charge. So in the case of the private utilities, their delivery services, in your case, it would be your distribution charge. And those varies, 25% for National Grid and 27% NSTAR. I calculated that if you were to, if you were to essentially replace the prompt payment discount, the 10% prompt payment, payment discount, with a 25% low-income discount, that that would reduce the total bill for such a customer by 6% relative to what the customer would pay if they took advantage of the prompt payment discount. I didn't look at adding the low-income discount to the prompt payment discount because that seems duplicative, but that is another option. So those are, those are the two options that I'm putting forward there as options. I think they're both fairly equivalent overall in terms of the amount of revenue that RMLD would spend in putting a rate like that into place. The only difference is that the flat customer charge would benefit low-usage customers more, and the percentage would benefit, tend to benefit high-usage customers more. Since we really don't have any data on the customers who would qualify for that, it's not really, it's not really possible to estimate what the actual impact would be on customers or on revenues, but...
Yeah, why don't we, by the way, if anyone has questions to ask, please feel free as we're going through this.
Yeah, my question, reading this last night, a couple things struck me. Maybe one question is for Mayhew, maybe one is for the department. If we, if this discount, or whatever it is, the, in terms of the lower rate for these customers, where's the offset of this going to be? It's got to be, the offset has got to be made up by somebody, some other customers within the system. Where would the offset of this be? And my second question is, how would this be administered, and what's the cost of administering this by the department if this were to be put in place?
So yeah, so the first question in terms of where the, where the revenues would come from, it, as I just said, it's not really possible to estimate what that, what the revenue loss would be. So initially, the revenue would, would come out of net income initially. Once you gained a year's experience, you would probably adjust the rates to make up for the, for the lost income. I think the presumption that I have going into it is that we're not talking about a huge amount of revenue that would be lost, that would make a material impact on, you know, meeting the revenue needs of the system. In terms of implementation, I think the way, the way the rates are implemented by, by private utilities and other municipals is to not, not to get involved in trying to determine who's eligible, but simply require documentation from the customer that they're, that they're eligible to receive some other means-tested assistance. So it would really be relatively simple to sign up a customer for that and to create a separate rate code in the, in the billing system to do that.
That's, that's accurate. We have other payment plan issues and things like that where we work with customers where they're required to provide us documentation, so we already have that process. And I think with the new COGS deal update, we'll be able to add that, that rate structure. Correct, Bob?
And customers would know what means-tested assistance is, or we could publish it in such a way that they would know what it's about.
It's typically identified in the tariff that what specific programs are considered to be, so it's, you know, fuel assistance.
So that I understand, I wish I had my little flip chart that I had from one of the previous meetings. Basically, we'd be taking it out of the, potentially out of the 8% of whatever we're earning on the bottom line in the short term, and then as time goes on, we basically, the other customers will be making up for this as time goes on. Is that an accurate statement?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Yes. Okay.
Right, it's a mix issue.
It's a mix issue.
So this could help benefit some of our seniors.
Presumably, yes.
Right, and that's, I think that's exactly what we're thinking of for doing that and across all communities.
All right, the, the next recommendation has to do with unbundling the rate structure and creating rates that take all, essentially take all of the purchased power cost out of the base rates. Right now, you have a, you have about four cents of purchased power cost embedded in the base rate, and the rest of the purchased power cost comes through the purchased power adjustment, what we would, and also a fuel adjustment, which recovers all of the energy costs. We would propose collapsing those three pieces into a single charge, a purchased power charge that would, that would include all of the purchased power costs and would be billed on the basis of estimates, and then trued up after the fact to actuals. Is fairly standard practice in the industry by now to break out the, what we call the distribution rate, which, which covers all the cost of owning, operating, and maintaining your distribution system, plus all of your profit, net income, and putting that into what's essentially your base rate, what we can now call your, your distribution rate. And everything else, all the purchased power transmission costs get recovered through a purchased power charge. That makes it, it makes it much more transparent and easier to account for purchased power collection, whether you're, whether you're accurately collecting all of your purchased power costs, and also whether your base rates are performing properly, because if you, if you end up be, with more revenue than expected at the end of the year, it's difficult to tell right now whether you over-collected on your base rate or whether you over-collected on the purchased power cost. Whereas, breaking, breaking it into these two components makes it possible to do that. So the, the one downside to this is that the prompt payment discount, which currently applies to the entire base rate, would have, would no longer apply to the four cents of purchased power that's built into the base rate. So while the percentage discount would remain at 10%, the dollar discount to the customers would be smaller. So you, because the idea is that you're, if the purchased power charge is a pass-through of costs, you can't discount it, because if you discount it incorrectly, it'll under-recover your costs. So the, what we would propose is that the prompt payment discount would remain at 10%, but it would only, but would apply to a smaller piece of the rate. This is how the, an example of how the rates would look, I only did this for the residential rate, but the results for each of the other rates would be similar. The customer charge remains the same. As you can see, the base rate charge would, would drop by about, about four cents, really more like four and a half cents, because we would take that base rate, purchased power charge out. The, so that, in place of the four cents that's in the base rate, plus the five-cent fuel adjustment, plus the two-mill purchased power adjustment, you would have a nine-and-a-half cent purchase power charge, which recovers all of the purchased power cost, purchased power plus transmission. These, these designs reflect the same expense picture. This is fiscal 15 projected, and so the, the bill on the right, the typical 500-kilowatt-hour bill is, is that 1.3% higher overall. The energy conservation charge and an hypercredit would stay the same. The 10% prompt payment discount would only apply on the four-and-a-half cent distribution charge plus the $3.73 customer charge. So it's, it's a smaller discount, and that is built into the rate, that discount, the change in the discount. So the, the bill would have one fewer line item on it, and, you know, might be a little bit easier for the customer to understand. Certainly would be more, easier to compare to, say, a National Grid or an NSTAR bill, because a National Grid and NSTAR bill is going to have the same terminology. It's going to have a distribution charge on it for residential class that they can compare and see how your distribution charge compares to their distribution charge. And increasingly, municipal utilities have the same structure, so they can make that same comparison with, with other municipal utilities in your surrounding communities.
Is there a question?
Any questions on that?
Question, go ahead.
So on your figures, you used 2013 numbers, because I grabbed the residential bill, and the multipliers weren't the same as what you're using in your...
No, this is based on forecast fiscal 15, so starting July 1st, based on estimated purchased power costs for 14, for 2014 and 15.
So in your present column, you have, for just example, on fuel adjustment, .05167?
Yes.
But on the bill, it's actually .06? So it's not quite a penny, but it's a penny difference. So that's, they're saying those are 2015, but 2014 showing difference in pricing.
Yeah, this is always the problem in doing this kind of a comparison. What this compares is what the bill would, would be if, if you didn't change the rates to this new structure, but you had the costs that you're going to have next year. So it's not what the bill is now, it's what, it's what the bill would be on July 1st if we didn't do this rate change.
So on top of the increase we just had, we're talking about adding another 1.3% to everything?
Well, it's actually going to end up being a, probably going to end up being a decrease.
Colleen, would you care to comment on that?
We do purchase power and basically a purchase power fuel adjustment analysis every month that fluctuates. So it's, you're, you're trying to hit a moving target.
Okay.
All of purchased power transmission and everything we make no profit on, it's a pass-through. So whatever it is, is what we collect, and it goes up and down.
Okay.
So you're reconciling, you're projecting forward and you're reconciling. Every single month, it changes, because you have to recover that. And so by, by unbundling it, the part that you can make the not-for-profit 8% goes on to the distribution side, so that we are clear that we're recovering all of our purchased power costs.
Okay.
Does that make sense? But that number you're looking at is a moving target.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Tom, please.
So I know it depends on a lot of factors, but in general, for an average bill, taking out the purchased power charge, what is that, 10%? 8%? 9%? Or 1/2%?
The 10% of the discount?
Yeah, so right now, the total bill gets discounted 10%, but then the new way of doing it...
Well, let's see, the, the fuel doesn't get discounted today, so right now...
I guess just the impact of this change, I'm just trying to understand from the customer's point of view.
Yeah.
You're not going to get about 10% like you used to get, but...
So if you were to say, say on a 500-kilowatt-hour bill, and you've got nine cents, say, so it's about, right now, that's about $45, so a 10% discount would be about $4.50. It's going to be about half that, so instead of $4.50 discount, it'll be about $2.25 discount. It'll still be, you know, so right now, the, the discount may be, it's not 10% of the bill, it's probably 7% of the bill, it might go to 5% of the total bill. So that's kind of the ballpark you're talking about.
And in terms of the description of the bill, would it be clear, not because obviously customers will quickly pick up that it's what it used to be, so it'd be a sub-tolling or some sort of...
I'm not sure how the bill is structured. You probably want to deal with that through community education before you, before you put the rates into effect.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Mayhew, can you speak to some of the other utilities that have gone to unbundling and how they've dealt with the difference? Have they increased the percentage on the prompt payment discount?
Some, there's only one that I know of that, that increased the prompt payment percentage in order to try to maintain the same level of dollar discount. Most municipals these days are realizing that the prompt payment discount is maybe not as, as useful a tool as, as it used to be regarded. There's, there's some indication that, in essence, it's a, it's a tax on customers who, who don't have the cash to pay their bill quickly, and it's a fairly high tax. Effectively, you're charging them 10% more for not being able to come up with the money right away, and so phasing that out is, is a, is not damaging to the utility. But it's hard to do, I don't know of any municipals that have done a, you know, kind of a controlled experiment. The only situation I'm aware of is that, is that about 10 years ago, Concord, Massachusetts, added a prompt payment discount and said that they saw a fairly sharp drop in their receivables as a result of that. So that's kind of the, the thing, the, the main advantage from the utilities' perspective. It's essentially your, it's another case where the customers who don't get the discount are paying for the discount that, that the other customers are getting, because it's a zero sum economically.
Please, go ahead.
You're nearing the prompt payment discount, which is, I'm drawing on a conversation this committee had 15 years ago. Is the 10% common? Is that really what the standard is of municipals?
It's, it's very widespread, yes. I would say probably 80, at least 80% of municipal utilities have a 10% prompt payment discount. Some of them have 5% for, for some groups of customers, like businesses who always pay promptly anyway, so it's...
Because I know, it was a conversation that took place about 15 years, the Peabody, the Peabody Municipal actually avoided a rate increase by lowering their prompt payment discount. I know that was something that was, that was done a while ago. You know, I mean, I'm in that category. I don't, I don't make the deadline, I'm sorry, just the way my bill falls. So I do pay the extra 10%, which is, you know?
Well, that, that certainly is a choice, and maybe that's something we need to consider in, in another session rather than this one, but, you know, the other, for example, the water department, I know here in Redding, I don't know where it is in the other communities, also has a significant discount if you pay ahead of time. And so we've got, it's not just the electric utility that's doing it, it's also water, and I'm not sure if there are others or not. Yes, go ahead.
So any idea what the experience is here at RMLD, how many customers take advantage of the...
You know, I don't recall the exact number, but it's, it's always very high. I've never seen a municipal utility where, where less than 85, fewer than 85%, and it's usually typically more like 90% take the discount. Do you recall on hand what, what percentage they...
Typically, annually, we'll call the, make about a million dollars of corporate discounts, but I know on our discount dates, the amount of payments that are processed, unbelievable. We're inundated with, with everybody seeing that, that discount date, all our commercials, it's like clockwork. We know when to expect that wire payment, it's right in the discount date. Also, it's part of our automatic pay, one of the options we have is automatic pay, it's done in the discount. We have people that send out the auto pay, they all get the discount, and all that money coming in on a particular day, so it really helps us a lot.
So there's obviously a balance between having it or not having it, certainly, and I think it's very personal, because I use it all the time.
I agree.
And you don't use it, so...
Absolutely.
I think from the economics perspective, the balance is if you get your money faster, that's, and you have knowledge that you're going to receive it, that's a real positive. I don't know what the other communities, well, the other communities obviously are part of our mix, so we're getting 80 to 90% prompt payment through, through the discount. If we were to take that away or to lower it, then, well, that's got some economic impact, obviously.
And on the other side, is there a penalty, in my personally experienced, what if you're... And on the other side, is there a penalty, in my personally experienced, but if you're 90 days late, is there a penalty charge? Because that would suggest you may not only do you get the money, but you don't-
Yeah, I don't think, how long before you shut off power? That's the ultimate penalty.
There are regs, there are regs that dictate when we can shut off termination, we send out termination notices on our rate payers that it goes past due, and if they don't address it, they will be possibly shut off. We send them two notices, then if it gets to the 90-day point, there's methods and processes we have to go through to ensure that people just don't think they might have paid the electric bill. But there are guidelines by the DPU that say, isn't the payment as due, get back to the utility, or else they have a right to shut you off.
And again, that's probably the exception rather than the rule.
Right.
I mean, it's probably a very small percentage that we have to go to those kinds of lengths to do. As I understand it, the department basically bends over backwards to try and help people make their payments and get the payments in here on time.
And I think what I was kind of touching on is if you look, if you did eliminate the prompt payment totally, it doesn't mean that you go back to some 30-day payment, it could go up 90 or so, because now there's no incentive to get the discount, so it doesn't mean people are going to pay, you know, the next day or the next even, so.
Sure, right.
I think that's right, that it certainly has a positive impact on cash flow.
The town also has, you can also put a lien on people's property. Let me correct you through the towns. I don't know if we've done that.
Presidential law, or is it one of them?
I don't know if we've done that recently. Can I follow up on a comment?
Please, go ahead.
So, the comment was made that this 1.3% is an increase of the four and a half percent from before, and then you made the comment that it's actually a decrease. Can somebody explain what that means on that?
Well, it's a function of the fact that the 1.3% increase is, all other things being equal, on July 1st, this, the bill will be 1.3% higher than it would have been. Where it is relative to where the, what the June bill was, is a function of purchase power costs that are being billed in June versus purchase power costs that are being forecast for July. So, I don't know exactly where that's going to fall out right now, but it certainly, I think, given the increase, it looks like it's not a large adjustment, one way or the other, from what customers will be paying.
So, potentially, under the PPA, we still call it the PPA? The PPA, potentially, this 1-point power, purchase power adjustment, that could still, that could be a 1.3% increase no matter what, no matter what we do.
Purchase power costs can increase, can swing the bill much more than that 1.3% very easily, especially over the last couple of years. So, yes, we're dealing with the costs that RMLD has some control over, going up 1.3%. The others are going to, they're going to continue to swing either way.
So, if we do nothing, we may end up with a 1.3 anyway. Is that my understanding?
I think that is out of our control. I mean, that's external purchasing of power, which could go anywhere, and we're actually dependent on our internal talent pool of being able to find the lowest possible-
Outstanding, outstanding.
The lowest possible cost, and that is, I do believe that that's an advantage that we have in this department.
All right. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
We've got a couple more slides in there which should be done.
Let me make one comment, final comment on that, and I think we need to re-look at different variations on a theme of the discount, and I don't want to just leave it out there hanging. We will look at it and try to come to some kind of reasonable assumption about, between getting people to pay quickly and early versus penalizing people who don't pay. I mean, if people don't pay, then, I mean, that's true across all aspects of life, not just the electric bill. So, it's something that I think we've established for a long time, and I think we should continue to take advantage of wherever possible. Yes, if you don't mind, Marsha, would you mind coming up to-
Sorry, so before you get off, the variation in the purchase power, so my question is, is there, I don't know how much, what percentage is purchase power, but I think it's a pretty high percentage, and that's kind of variable, right, in our-
You can actually see from the right-hand slide that the purchase power is nine and a half cents, and that compares to four and a half cents for everything else, so, yeah, it's about two-thirds.
So, I'm wondering, is there any way to try and make that variability less? Like, are there any strategies to make that variability less on the purchase power or to make purchase power be lower, as a total percentage?
Yes, Colleen, please.
The Integrated Resources and Planning Group, that's what they do, by creating a power supply portfolio that has the lowest power, the risk management for a power supply. That's how we're able to have pretty much the second lowest rate in the state. I'm not sure, you know, other than doing analysis on the portfolio almost on a daily basis, that you could get it much lower than that.
So, there isn't any way, though, to decrease the variation on it, or make that-
The fluctuation?
Yeah, the fluctuation.
When you're doing purchase power and fuel adjustment analysis, you're generally looking ahead six months and you're reconciling six months, and then you try to strategize so that you can even that out as best you can.
Mm-hmm.
Because, again, you're forecasting ahead.
Sure.
So, if you know that it's going to go up, you might do something a little bit different if you know it's going to go down, so you can try to keep as stable rate as possible within that pass-through and getting all of your money back. Do you know what I mean? Jane, do you want to speak to it a little further? Is that, that's basically what you're trying to do?
The reason that I'm asking is just that if two-thirds of our power and two-thirds of it can go up and down, it sort of doesn't, almost doesn't make a difference for the rest of the rate, right, because you've got that potential for things to bounce around a lot.
Absolutely, and, you know, the other people who, in other industries, who are presented with that kind of variability, what they try to do is track it historically and know when it's going to go up, so you know in July and August, you're going to use air conditioning, it's going to go up, and then what you try to do is do longer-term contracts at lower cost to try and help that, or you shave the peak power if you possibly can by putting things into, to shave the peak power. We're actually trying to do that, we're trying to get some programs in place where we can shave the peak power. It takes time to make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, another thing we took a look at is the structure of the hydropower credit. Presently, the hydropower credit is calculated on the basis of the market value of the capacity and energy that RMLD receives from the New York Power Authority, and we're recommending changing that methodology to a formula that's tied to the average cost of the energy, just the energy that RMLD receives from all of its other sources compared to the cost of energy from NIPO, so that if the average cost of energy, which is the same, basically the same number that's your current fuel adjustment, as that goes up, the value of the hydropower credit will increase, and as that goes down, the value of the hydropower credit will decrease. Since we're in a period of time now where energy prices have gone up significantly in the last year and are projected to continue to go up, this change in methodology should, should, it's not guaranteed, but it should produce a larger credit for the residential customers through the hydropower credit.
Good, thank you. Any comments on that? I think trying to help the residential customers is an excellent approach.
And finally, we're taking a look at street lighting. We're still in the process of reviewing the present street lighting rate to determine if there's any need to adjust the rates, haven't quite completed that, but it's beginning to look as if the present streetlight rates are acceptable, and we're probably not going to recommend any change in the present rates. We are, however, looking at instituting a new rate for LED streetlights as those come on stream that will help reflect the greater efficiencies being offset by the higher cost of the fixtures. So, we'll develop a rate that's consistent with the other rates, but will reflect that greater efficiency in the rate, so that, hopefully, that the cost to the communities won't increase as a result of adopting the new technology in the short run, and will certainly decrease it over time as the cost of those new fixtures gets amortized over the expected longer life of the facility. Hope to have those rates done in the next year or so.
Any questions on this topic?
And any further questions?
Yes, please.
Are you going to talk at all about the spreadsheets?
I was not planning on it.
Okay. I do have a question. Power is a big part between demand, transmission, and energy. It looks like it's about 70 million of the total budget.
Excuse me, which page are you on?
This is the bottom of page, six of six.
Six, page six.
Going in. Energy, we meter. So, as a customer, I'm probably not going to complain about that because there's a meter at my house, getting my usage, and meters are new, so should be in calibration. However, the $40 million for demand and transmission, those are based on your estimate. So, if your estimate perhaps would be off 2.5%, that's a million dollars. And I took a look at what it might take for the metering, now that we have fancy metering. Ran the numbers, you need to get every meter every 15 minutes. So, ran that number, what's a year's worth? That's 18 months of data measured every 15 minutes. This is eight gigabytes. You can get a terabyte, which is equivalent to 125 of these, for $100, $200. The data rate, it looked like a kilobit per second, which is really very modest. If you have dial-up modem, some of us, old people with old antique systems still have that, and the peak rate is 56 kilo per second. I'm not sure whether it's bits or bytes, but anyway, it's vastly greater than a kilobit per second. On the board, we have never seen really good data. Schools have pretty fancy meters that went in there when we have the school rate, but we've never really seen the demand that they have relative to what the chart says, the percentage. So, I would be reluctant to go $40 million, and just on the basis of an estimate, when it seems so very easy, why don't you just get the data? A kilobit per second, 18 months of data taken every 15 minutes, the hardware is modest. Some software, sure, but it's just a lot of processing and not much software, it seems to me.
Well, there are many, there are many utilities, some, even some municipal utilities, who are in the process or have already installed smart meters on every single one of their accounts and are now in the process of building that data. This modeling actually benefits from that data because while the data that's in here is not RMLD's own residential customers, it is the residential customers of National Grid because they are doing that kind of research, and they have to publish residential class loads hourly for an entire year on their website for the use of competitive electric suppliers. So, that's the data that I use when I determine what a residential, what the residential customers are contributing to your monthly system peak, and therefore, how much of the transmission cost gets allocated to them, how much residential customers are contributing to the summer annual peak, and therefore, how much capacity cost gets allocated to them. So, the, while I wouldn't guarantee that these allocations are accurate to within 1% or 2%, I think there's a very high degree of confidence, particularly with the residential class, because the residential class consists of 20,000 customers, there's an enormous amount of diversity in there. There's not going to be very many outliers that will throw the results off like you can have with large industrial customers. I'm a little bit more leery about using typical load shapes for large commercial and industrial customers because those customers can have very different usage patterns from one utility to another. But I'm pretty comfortable that the data that was used to allocate the capacity and transmission costs here is awfully representative. Certainly, can it be better? Yes. Can you do a better job of sending correct price signals to customers? You know, be careful what you wish for. If every residential customer has a smart meter on the house, you have the potential to bill every single one of them for exactly their contribution to the summer peak, and that's going to have hugely varying effect on customers. Right now, you're essentially lumping all those people together and socializing the costs of that class, and you're treating them all as if they had exactly the same contribution to your costs. If you disaggregate them, you get the same thing that we saw when we created the small commercial class, you're going to have winners and losers, and the winners are going to win small, and the losers are going to lose big, because that's kind of the nature of a probability distribution like that. So, it's, the data is getting more available, it's getting more affordable, I'm sure that you're, that people are looking at that and are in the process of doing it, you know, it's, it just becomes a matter of what you decide to do with that data to-
So, this may be a case where, one of those unique cases where you're both right. I mean, we certainly like to use real-time data. I mean, there's no question, if we could use real-time data, it would help the analysis tremendously, and lacking that. What is our penetration of smart meters across our four towns?
All except, yeah, except the club 500, you don't have.
All except for 500? For residential users?
Or not, for commercial, for residential, for residential, pretty much all the customers.
All the customers have it. So, it becomes a question of how do we get the right algorithms in place to do real-time measurements, and we certainly hear what you're saying about doing things on an individual basis, which actually might have some very positive things in terms of load reduction, right? So-
No question, when you start to send that price signal to customers, they're likely to do something with it.
That's right, exactly. So, the question becomes, I think, how difficult is it to, not tonight, not tomorrow, but- tomorrow, but over some time period here to get real-time data as Commissioner Soli was, is asking so we can begin feeding that into the model and seeing what the dichotomy is in terms of, of using real, real data. And if we have the mechanism to use it, why not use it? It might help us make decisions differently if we had the actual data. But I, I'm expressing an opinion, by the way, so please feel free to disagree with me.
So what we're talking, what we're talking about is, and I agree, is we're making assumptions for that one point three percent increase. Like Bob's saying, we should be taking real data to make sure that that isn't an assumption. We're getting, you know, if we're talking about another one point three percent increase to the end user, then we should.
It's going to take time to figure out what the algorithms are and write the software and collate it all and get it into a place where we can do another analysis. You know, we, we live in an existence here at the RMLD where exactly we're, we're a month or two months behind knowing what all the real data is coming in from purchase power, et cetera, and we have to readjust that in, in the following bill, in the following invoice. That's probably off more than one or two percent would be my, my estimate.
We just had an increase, and we talked about it before, but it's, what do you want to call it, five percent or nine percent? I've seen it in graphs of trending buildings.
Let me be very clear. It was not nine percent. This, there is no question of a nine percent. Nine percent was on a subcategory, which when you go to the entire bill, was five percent.
Yeah, we had a five percent increase, now we're gonna go up another one point three.
That's correct. We're, we're going up to what our cost of power is because by law, we have to do that. This is not a, a, we wish it could be something different. By mandate of the Massachusetts Legislature, we have to pay for their power and we're going to be doing that. Otherwise, it becomes illegal. Is that clear?
No, but.
Okay, we'll send you the documentation on that.
No, I'm just, I'm answering, I'm asking a question. We've gone up five percent, gone up another one point three, and yes, and it's because of that, that, that wasn't always explained when I was originally told about. It was because, I believe the statement was, and we can go back a minute, was part of the reason the increase was coming was because the things that have been done for energy savings have affected the income or the net profit and, so this was the change. So the net profit to me is what our MLDs making. That's all I'm asking.
Well, I think we, we, when we were walking through the analysis for the rate increase, we clearly indicated that there'd probably be another rate increase in July timeframe. We were doing an estimate. It's like, how do you get as possibly close to where you can get with a five percent increase? And then if we find through the cost of service study we needed more, it's another one percent. And I, I think that's incredibly accurate to get into, into that, that category. Remember, it's been three and a half years since we've had a rate increase. I mean, if you had a salary increase or any of us had a salary increase over, not had one over three and a half years, I don't think so. Everyone is, has, has had lease cost of living increases.
I disagree. If you look at a lot of companies, there are companies out there still to this time that people don't get one every year, so.
Well, after this meeting, you can share with me who those companies are because they're probably going out of business. I'm sorry, Colleen, you had a comment you wanted to make?
Oh, I will, I will ask Kameed to work with Bob Fournier to look at the data channels of what those meters can bring back. I believe it's an hour's worth.
Hourly.
Hourly. And to look at the data channels to see what we can do as far as collecting, just to go forward, to look at the accuracy of that amount that's been allocated, but not to go through and go in a direction for billing each individual customer. We'll remain socialized, but only to try to get a little bit more accurate data on an hourly basis.
Excellent.
Okay.
Any other comments? Yes.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Soli's on the right track in terms of, and all, I think a lot of the comments are also on the right track that the more data we have, the more efficient things become. And I certainly become impressed by how much the organization can save, how much revenue we can, we can generate by dealing with that peak. And if I understand correctly, we can't change the rates in a way to influence the peak because we don't have tiered pricing for, for, for almost all customers do not have tiered pricing. So it's not like we can raise rates from three to six P M. for some of them and, and help send a pricing of the chop of the peak. Am I incorrect about that?
We are hoping to be able to work with the larger commercial customers to be able to maybe have real-time pricing at some point.
At some point, right? So right now, we can't have that conversation tonight and we can't think about a rate that does that because we don't have, we don't have a tiered structure now. So, but when we have the data, I think, you know, when we are able to say, hey, you guys are the ones who contributed more to that peak and which resulted in how many hundreds of thousands of dollars extra per year because of these high monthly peaks on the summer peak, they should pay. And at least for the first year, you can say, hey, this is gonna come next year, but you're gonna get a letter that says, next year, this is coming. And look, look at, look at what it would have been this year if we did it now. And I do think we should be heading in that direction. The, the numbers are, are amazing. I mean, if we can cut that peak, just the peak hour of every month, five percent, this is one hour a month, we save like a million bucks for the, the organization. It's ama- it's amazing how powerful that is. So I do think we, the data will help us do that.
Right.
And, and the people who are contributing to that should be made to understand that they need to do something and that we will charge them if they don't. In the meantime, I think what we can all do as we head into the heat wave season and there's gonna be a hot day in June or July, it's coming, there's gonna be another giant spike and we're gonna know when it's gonna come because we're gonna look at the weather forecasts and, and Jane and Colleen, they're gonna know, okay, it's coming today. And I really would like us to get to the point where we're all, we can, they can't do it by themselves. I can't, know one person, but if everybody is contributing to some kind of larger communication strategy, so that day at ten A M., there's emails going out all over the place and there's radio announcements and there's Facebook posts going out over thousands of customers that people get the message and they do something that day. And we will see real financial savings if we implement a communication strategy like that. And I'm sure we can do it. It's not that hard to actually do that because given all the email chains and all the social media, all the people, people that everybody knows, it's just a matter of hitting that button on that day. So it's something everybody can contribute to. I don't wanna, I think we all understand what that's about. What I, what I've learned also is that the newspapers are useless for this purpose. I did a personal exercise, you know, no criticism of the newspapers. I, I wrote an op-ed saying, hey folks, you know, laying some of this out and saying, why don't you go get a time use meter? And I excitedly, you know, called Colleen, hey, how many people came in? And after that great piece, none. So we had a front page story in the Chronicle and another one in the Wilmington paper, it did nothing. So when we do press releases to the papers, it does nothing to consumer behavior. That's what I learned. So this is kind of viral, different strategy for reaching people on the days we need to reach them is what we can do in the meantime, until we have the data and until we have these deals with the commercials that's coming. But July's coming up and we can do this, this year. So that concludes my.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Based on the energy conservation charge, just from my own information, on that particular rate, what constitutes that? And have we, have we ever thought about maybe a flat rate on that, just right across? I know some of the other utilities would charge, like say thirty-six cents, that's your conservation charge. Is that something that?
It's a rate design. Initially, the conservation charge is self-funded, so any money's collected for that, go out for that purpose in terms of our plans rebate for our residuals, our energy audits that we provide for, as well as our commercial incentive programs. The rate design, when you look at the IOUs or the private companies, are set up on a per kilowatt hour charge likewise. It's about three times higher than what we're charging and so that's why we elected to choose that rate design. You know, there's all, you can design a rate however you want to. I think historically, we used to charge residential fifty cents per, per bill.
Right.
And then again, that, that charge brings in revenue, estimated revenue around seven hundred thousand. And then we have lots of customers who utilize that, we, and, and both residential and commercials. So it's a matter of achieving the revenue requirements and setting the rate appropriately so that you can collect those revenues.
And we're generating sufficient funds for that?
It's, it's been, correct.
Okay.
From a, from a rate design perspective, charging on the, on a flat per customer basis is considered to be fairly regressive because it, it affects small users much more highly than large users. In other words, somebody using two hundred kilowatt hours a month is gonna pay the same conservation charge as somebody using two thousand kilowatt hours a month, which some doesn't.
Well, I was thinking typically for a residential, you know, our twenty thousand residential customers, something across the board and they're not gonna be using two thousand, so I'm just like.
Well, some of them do. You'd be, you'd be amazed. I've seen residential customers using ten thousand kilowatt hours a month. It's, it's, it's pretty staggering when, when some.
That's not normal.
Surely, those are people who can benefit from a conservation program paid for by their own generous contributions to the conservation fund.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Yeah, the one thing that I'm taking away from this is that if we do nothing with the power purchase adjustment, that one point three percent may be coming in place anyway if we do nothing. And that's what I'm taking away from this, as I understand.
It's, it's two different pockets.
From what's been explained.
And, and, and if the, if the one point three percent comes in through the purchase power adjustment, it will not flow to your bottom line, it will not reach, reach your net income.
Right.
And it won't help you meet your revenue targets. So it's, it's really important that it go, that the one point three percent happen to the base rates regardless of what happens to the purchase power.
But are we trading a variable under the power purchase adjustment for a steady one point three?
Essentially, yes. Well, it's not trading because the, the variable still has to be recovered. The, those expenses and revenues are off in, in a different part of the world over here. And, and this part over here that has the one point three percent increase needs the one point three percent. Can't get it from, from over here. You can't, you can't use purchase power revenues to subsidize.
But the PPA goes away until we do another rate step, is what, is that my understanding? The, the PPA, the purchase power adjustment would go away completely and, and it would be replaced by the one point three percent increase?
No.
No.
The one point three, in, back in, when, when we started the rate increase discussion back in November, we had discussed a five percent in January or February and then another two percent in July that we were estimating based on our revenue requirements. I think there's a little bit of confusion because the purchase power and, the purchase power and the fuel are pass-throughs. The one point three percent is required for the revenue requirement and it doesn't have anything to do with, doesn't have anything to do with it. So maybe I'm not understanding.
Maybe I'm not understanding either. Maybe I'm not understanding either. Maybe we should have a discussion offline.
Let's have a, yeah, sidebar discussion on that offline. I think that'd be, that'd be a thing, a good thing to.
Maybe I'm not understanding.
If there are no other questions, yes?
One other one at the top. So you're saying that basically you're taking the pass-through numbers and putting them into, bundling those together? Because your discounts can only happen on the part you're making revenue on?
Yeah, currently you have an embedded purchase power piece that's a pass-through, but it's part of your base rate.
Yep.
Okay, so you have your base rate has purchase power in it and has your O and M expenses in it. And then as purchase power and fuel fluctuates from what you have in the embedded rate as it goes up and down, you adjust that every month to collect what you have to collect. And so when you unbundle it, it's your expenses and your purchase power.
Yep.
And it's a, it's a lot easier to do budget to actuals, it's a lot easier to make sure that you are, as Mayhew said, collecting, here's your expenses, you're collecting for your expenses, here's your purchase power, you're collecting for that. And as Mayhew said, most utilities are going to a transparent unbundled rate.
So that kind of goes back to what in the last commissioner's meeting that I said, Bob was asking to take the pass-through money and keep it a separate bu- or keep it a budget so you can see on both? So you're working towards that big, you know, when we left the last conversation, it sounded like it may not be that what Bob was looking for, but it sounds like you're working towards a budget that's gonna show both those as separate lineups all the way down.
Correct.
My answer to that meeting was that we were doing that exactly. We're going to an unbundled rate. And the, the reason why it's, it's not there is because we have, the billing software is being upgraded, so we're doing the cost of service and unbundling it and then as soon as Coggsdale Billing is capable of handling it, we're gonna unbundle it on the bill.
Yeah, thank you.
But that's the direction we're going, correct.
Yes, Commissioner Soli?
If you wanna know about the current PPA, I got my bill today.
Did you pay it?
Today.
That's the super problem.
Did you bring a check? Did you bring a check with you tonight?
It's direct billing. The value is currently a little more than half a cent per kilowatt hour. So on five hundred kilowatts, kilowatt hours, that would be two dollars and fifty cents as opposed to what's shown here, there's an eighty-five cent differential. So if we just pulled that PPA in right now, it would be in excess of what it's shown on this residential rate chart.
That includes the fuel also, you'd have to add the fuel to the PPA to do, to, to account for the purchase power charge.
Yeah, I think you're just comparing what it showed as the present purchase power adjustment on that chart.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and that's not the present today, it's the present July first, based on, on budget estimates. It's what, it's what the budget would be for next year, not what it is right now.
My, my bill, it's half a cent a kilowatt hour.
So it's, it's the point I was trying to make, it's a very real possibility that if we put the one point three percent in place, and again, it's all based upon estimates, I understand, we could actually be decreasing the bills to the customer. There's a possibility of that existing as opposed to doing nothing.
If purchase power costs go down at the same time, you'll.
Right, yeah.
That's what you would see. One thing that's really important to note about, one of the reasons why it's important to do this is that if, if purchase power costs are built, are confused, tangled together with a base rate, it's far too easy for the utility to do essentially a backdoor rate increase by over-collecting purchase power costs and flowing them through into the bottom line because you can't account for them. So that's what municipals have done for decades is, is basically as soon as they got the ability to do a, a purchase power adjustment, is rather than increasing their rates, they would just increase the purchase power adjustment. And they would do that so that they could make their rate of four percent, eight percent, whatever rate of return. And their auditors weren't really, it wasn't really possible for, for their auditors to tease that apart and say, well, no, you didn't actually earn four percent return this year, you just over-collected five hundred thousand dollars in purchase power costs. With it broken out like this and unbundled, that's no longer a possibility. And you, as the customer or as the, as the other towns, will be able to take a look at those numbers and say, yeah, they did in fact, collect the correct amount of money from base rates and they recovered all the purchase power costs. So it's, it's much more transparent and it's, it's really better for the customers and for everybody.
Ms. O'Brien, you had a?
I was just gonna make a comment. When, when we went through the four and a half, five percent, actually the schools with three point nine percent increase, so it varied a little bit during different rate classes, but when we went through that conversation, Jane got up and we discussed that realistically, if you looked at the fuel, it had gone down to the point where there really wasn't an increase at all. So we went through that whole thing about the four and a half percent increase, but realistically, the purchase power had gone down more than what we were collecting. And we don't really have an opportunity to convey that because we have to, we're doing such a good job with the purchase power and fuel that no one ever sees how well that's going versus when you have to take a rate increase, which is really on the O and M piece. Okay, so realistically, there was no, there really wasn't a five percent increase. It was all just magic. No, it was like, it, it was offset so that it really, didn't really occur. But purchase power can go up, you know, if you have one of your nuclear plants shut down or things like that, you have to go to the market, you have to do replacement power, it can go up. And we tried to stabilize that over ti- you know, over time or to soften it so that there's no rate spikes. And we do that on a daily basis. But yeah, unfortunately, purchase power can go up and, and we have to recover it, so I don't know if that helps, but you really didn't get much of a rate increase last year, even though.
On, on that note, I think we will, I, well, what I'd like to do is, if there are no more questions, just perhaps you might want to know the next citizens' advisory board meeting?
Well, I've gotta, I've gotta address that before we adjourn.
Okay. And the next RMLD board meeting will be Thursday, May twenty-ninth. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Let me ask, what's the next step now at this point? Where do we go from here now that we've had the presentation? What's the next step?
Okay. I think we. I think we need some refinement on the LED lights. There's a couple of different pieces of this that need refinement before we can provide the, the final acceptance of the policy.
And you'll need actual rate schedules that, that, that actually implement it, so a specific set of rates that are, that are, that you can vote on.
So that would have to happen by the next meeting, correct, RMLD meeting.
So we need, we need a meeting. I don't know if I follow.
The next step, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, would be a recommendation for adoption of the, the policies that you, we have just walked through.
Correct.
And with, with agreement on each one of the different proposals in terms of, of breakouts on how to structure the mix question. And so, and then approval for the 1.3 percent increase. So there's sort of three different things that need to, to happen. Yes, please.
That needs to happen before it comes to us.
Right. That's correct.
It needs to happen from you folks coming to us.
Okay, that's why I'm trying to establish the timetable, yes.
This isn't going to happen right away.
Right.
With, we're taking it that way. It's going to take you folks some time to get this all established, to get a recommendation to us.
I think we, we are planning on having a recommendation by our next meeting.
Which your next meeting is the 29th.
Is the 29th of May. Does that give us enough time?
Do you have the schedule?
In other words, do we need to have a, a meeting in between the 29th and not the 29th?
Because we have 30 days from the day you send the recommendation.
Right, right, that's what I'm trying to establish, the timetable.
Exactly. And the, and the 29th is coming up pretty quickly.
Right, I know. I wanted to establish the timetable.
I had, I had sent everyone a tentative schedule in order to go from being able to implement for July 1 and went backwards. I sent it to everyone, Jane just went to get a copy.
Okay.
Those are our time, you know, we're trying to target for time tables in order to work it backwards.
Okay, good. Has the CAB seen the, sort of, the timelines?
I sent it to everyone, correct.
Good. So what we'll try to do is work to this timeline that you've established, Colleen, and try, to try and make the decisions on each one of these and obviously pass it to the CAB and to get your approval or, or discussion relative to that.
Okay, thank you, Tom. The proposed schedule calls for May 8th, the RMLD Board and CAB Joint Meeting for Cost of Service Presentation, June 8th, is that still for Citizens Advisory Board Meeting Recommendation on Final Rates? June 8th. So this is...
June 8th is Sunday.
Greater than June 8th. So basically, what it's saying is, it was approximately 30 days from today. So if we need more time for the RMLD Commissioners to make a recommendation, whatever 30 days is from that is when the Citizens Advisory Board would make, have a recommendation on their final rates.
Okay, so it can't be June 8th, or we need to change that?
I'm sorry, it was, it's to, greater than.
Oh, greater than June 8th, I'm sorry. Right, so it would not be that, obviously.
We have to meet in order to make the recommendation.
Right.
And then we refer to the CAB, and after we meet, then the 30-day clock starts on them.
Right.
So if we're going to wait till May the, the 29th, that's going to give them until June the 29th, there's no way you're going to get this in place by July the 1st. It's just not going to happen.
Yeah, the input rates into the RMLD billing system is June 13th is the, June 18th is the deadline for Coggedale Billing changes.
So do we need a, a sooner meeting then for the RMLD Board?
What are you doing next week?
Yeah, well, later, later next week. Would that work for everyone?
Will you have the data you need to make the decision?
If we have the data, of course, yeah, right.
How long will it take to pull that?
Otherwise, we couldn't do it, yeah.
They're just talking their board down.
I know what you're saying, because...
You have it on the 15th, and you have it on the 20th.
The 20th was only a 10-day. It was just a placeholder.
We need to meet before May the 20th.
So...
You do, we know.
Right.
We do, we do.
Correct. So May, that would be May 15th, next Thursday? Does that work for everyone?
Anniversary.
Oh.
Ouch.
I'd like to be there for dinner, but...
Bring it with you.
Some brownies left in the conference room.
Yeah, unfortunately, time is of the issue. I think we need to probably do it. Okay, well, let's, let's choose the next Thursday then for a meeting of the RMLD, assuming that we have the data, all of the data that's, that's, that may be missing on any one of these items, and we have a very clear what decisions do we have to make on each individual item that's been presented tonight.
Because 30 is a house, it's wrong.
Sure, if we, anything we can do to make it easier to help David?
I just realized I had one small question that I meant to ask earlier. May I still?
Of course.
The, the customer charge goes up when people get a special meter, and it stays up forever, right? Like goes up by two bucks a month, like a time-use meter? I was wondering if there's a, if there's a point where there's a payback in that charge to them.
The customer charge of the time-use meter or not?
But it stays up forever, like if it's 40 years, you're paying that for 40 years.
Paying until we change the customer charge again.
Okay. I just, I know it increases to, to fray the cost for the extra equipment.
Usually, usually you try to find that out so that by the next time the next generation meter, you're going to be converting your meter and everything.
Anyway, okay, so it's already been thought of like that, okay.
Can I make a suggestion that we also set a date, maybe the, May the 19th, that Monday in case we not able to get the data by the 15th? That we have a second, a tentative date of the 19th as a backup, so we get them both posted timely? Can we do that? If for any reason that we can't make the 15th, we got the 19th.
Why don't you do the 19th?
Well, I, I will not be here the 19th, I'm being in Houston for three days that week, so I prefer to be here for that.
I prefer the 15th, too, absolutely.
So if we could do the 15th, that would be better.
Can it be done? Can we get the data?
I, I don't see any reason why, why the data can't all be in place by the 15th.
Okay.
Department agrees with that? Department agrees with that?
Yes.
Okay, Department agrees, so...
We'll have the data and that the 15th is a good date.
The 15th would be a good day. We'll try to make it as early as possible so that we can take care of other personal matters.
So it'll be 6:30.
2:05, 30.
May I be clear on the data that we need?
What, what I'm talking about is a, is a complete set of rate schedules.
Right.
Is really what you're talking about. The numbers already exist. The, the numbers are already in the, the cost of service model. It's simply a matter of reformatting them into rate schedules and...
Rate schedule is based on either options.
Does that work?
Either option being...
The options in some of the...
Oh, okay, in, in terms of like the low-income rate, there is, there were two options there, so I can give you two of those and whichever one you approve. Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll try to work through all of this on the 15th, and as soon as we come to conclusion, hopefully on the 15th, we will afford that to the CAB the next day.
Can I make one more suggestion? If any Commissioner has any specific data they want, they communicate the department tomorrow. If they, anything anybody thinks of, if they communicate it by, to the department tomorrow, so the department can...
That's an excellent suggestion, right, yeah.
Can be, do their homework.
And it, just a point is that when you recommend to the, to the CAB, it doesn't have to be 30 days, it can be up to 30 days, so, you know, they, they can...
Again, that, that's up to the CAB.
So I understand that, but...